This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Attention. All right, we starting? Here we go.
There we go. We're live. Okay, call to order the meeting, the regular monthly meeting of the Southampton School Committee. This is a regular meeting. It is being broadcast. Four out of five members present. We'll start with routine matters. Approval of the minutes of February 14th, 2024.
Under budget, so under four budget, the second paragraph, it refers to Jay O'Connor. His name is actually Jay Sullivan.
There's nothing else? Is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Made by Dylan, seconded by?
Seconded.
Margaret? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Public comment? Any member of the public can speak on any item that's not on the agenda. And if you can just state your name and your relationship to Norris.
Yep. Would you guys like a copy of anything that I'm going to be reading or?
Sure. Yep, if you have it.
Just because it'll be a little long. My name is Alice Badecker. I have a son, Avery Harrington Cho, second grader, and we live at 3E Street. And my spouse, Steffi Cho, is here also this evening. So I'm here this evening. I just wanted to make the situation aware.
Just if I could just, there's a couple of rules you got to follow.
Okay.
The only employee by name that you can mention in a public session is the superintendent.
Thank you.
So I noticed, so when you get to that name, just say employee.
Okay.
You can't mention them by name if they haven't been given notice to be here.
Okay.
But other than that.
Okay.
I apologize. I didn't get your name.
Alice Badecker. B-A-D-E-C-K-E-R.
Thank you.
All right. So just starting off, my name's Alice Badecker. And my spouse, Steffi Cho, we live with our eight-year-old son, who's a Norris School student, Avery Harrington Cho, at 3E Street. We're here to discuss a situation that occurred last week on Wednesday, March 6th, 2024, at the 3:30 pickleball weekly gathering. This is a Southampton School Committee-approved activity organized by one of the, what am I supposed to call them?
An employee.
Employee, okay. At the school. "We request revisions to be made to the process and policies regarding the rental of Norris School facilities to outside organizations. These revisions are necessary to prevent similar incidents from happening again in the future." At about 3:10, I picked up Avery at dismissal, as I do every day, and then later arrived to play at pickleball, which starts at 3:30. On this occasion, as on many Wednesdays in the past two years, Avery sat by the wall, closest to the outside door in the gym, waiting for Steffi to come pick him up. She's a teacher in Holyoke. During these times, he listens to podcasts on my phone and watches pickleball games. An employee had never informed us that children should not be in attendance during the pickleball. I did this last year. It was never any issue. Around 3:45, as pickleball games started to play, a ball rolled toward Avery and he picked it up, and he looked around to find who to throw the ball to. A man from the farthest court, which was behind me, screamed at Avery. And, you know, I mean, I could copy the way he screamed, but it was loud and aggressive. Just give him the ball, like his, you know, whatever. At that point, the person that needed the ball had been approaching Avery, and I was calling to him to try to tell him, like, who to throw it to. When this was happened, I was playing on the center court. I paused and turned and looked at the man who was screaming at Avery. The employee was on the same court as this man. I'm not sure if he addressed him at that time. After the incident, I went to the other side, to the gym, and I spoke with Avery, and I asked him if he heard the man yelling at him. He said yes. I asked him, how did it make him feel? He said sad. I told him, you should not listen to him, and if anyone ever speaks to you like that, then you should get mommy or mama. The two women I was playing with on the center court at that time later asked me if I spoke to the man who screamed at Avery, and I said no, because it wouldn't be pretty. I have, I have heard this man who yelled at Avery use inappropriate language that day and in the past at Norris School and at Kona Park. On Wednesday, the employee did ask the man to make sure the music he played did not have, and the printout is there. So those words were said out loud. Steffi arrived at the gym around 4:10 and picked Avery up and brought him home. I finished my game and then left pickleball. When I arrived home, I explained what happened to Steffi, Avery's other mom, and Brian, his older brother. We asked Avery to describe the way the man sounded when he heard him. His words were loud, unfriendly, and mean. He said he felt confused because he knew the ball did not belong to the farthest court where the man was. He continued to tell us it made him feel sad, mad, and frustrated. Those were the words he used. I spoke to an employee the following morning and briefly explained what happened. I requested a meeting for both Steffi and myself and said that we would be happy to have the other employee attend as well. She stated that she would speak with the other employee. Steffi and I met at 12:30 back at Norris School, and we were explained that the conversation with the other employee could not be shared with us at that time. Kind of ad-libbing here. She did say the employee heard the man yell at Avery. We discussed the event that occurred in more detail. It was explained to us that activities are run by groups who rent space in the school building, and the Southampton School Committee approves these groups through an application process. She gave an example of the Collaborative Education Services, who runs the after-school program where Norris School students end their day. This brings our concern of how situations are handled when there's inappropriate or and/or unsafe behavior by an outside group using the school building and grounds. We asked for a copy of the policy, which we read, and, and asked about who was, who signs off on the applications. As educators ourselves, we understand that outside organizations are running their own programs, but it is undeniably, deniably, the responsibility of the school committee to make every effort in knowing who is in our school buildings with children regardless of the time of day. According to the Southampton Rules and Regulations Concerning the Use of School Building and Grounds, Southampton School Committee's policy for rental of the building and grounds were last revised on March 25th, 2009. Aside from the amendment deleting the Nut Safe Protocols 4G, after reading the policy of the rules and regulations, changes are deemed necessary and advisable. This is in our strong opinion. Rules and regulations stated that no control over the behavior of outside groups, according to the rules and regulations, the school committee does have the power to revoke for any reason. We feel that the word "reason" needs to be described maybe in more detail. And that's just a copy of how it's written on the policy. Rules and Regulation 4D needs to define the word "preservation of order." In our opinion, there was 24 people playing, and if a situation like this where an adult could aggressively, that they don't even know, when there's a parent present there, address an eight-year-old child that way, you know, the word "preservation of order," I mean, what this person obviously felt was fully in order, but it was not in order to me. And this is an example we found that further describes, you know, inappropriate behavior found to be offensive. This is in Springfield's policy, as it's written. "To be offensive, vulgar, violent, or lewd may result in the immediate cancellation." So I'm thinking since 2009, there's been really no reason, probably, to take a look, a closer look at the policy, but we're asking you as a school committee to start taking a look at it, because something did happen. And to follow up in our pickleball community here in town, one of the gentlemen that is very involved in it told me, he followed up on Thursday with this gentleman and had a lengthy conversation because, you know, we're, we're thinking about now stating some rules on the pickleball courts and that, and what's considered offensive language, what isn't, who's welcome in Southampton if they're willing to follow those rules. And he did speak to the man in person after playing pickleball with him on Thursday morning, and then asked by his good friend who was there, "Do you think that he understood the message to him?" And he said, "I'm not sure that he did, because his final thing as he walked away from was, 'What the F everybody F and swears.'" So I think it's time that we probably look at the policy and say, okay, who are we letting come into a school facility where there are children possibly around? My son was with me because I play pickleball, and I was asked, "Do you think that he should be there?" And my answer to that, after days of thinking that, I don't care if he was supposed to be there or not. This man addressed him aggressively and screamed at him. He has never been spoken to like that before. And so I think it's time that we take a closer look at our policies and how they're written to be sure that this doesn't happen to children again there.
Okay. Thank you for bringing this to us. So we, well, so normally we would bring this up under other business later on, but in the event, you don't want to stay through the whole agenda to get to that piece. I think the, two paths are going here. One is our building principal is dealing with this internally, as parents have brought it to her. But separately, the request for the review, it's 2009, so, you know, I would suggest we take this up and let legal, share with legal the feedback, the current version, the suggested Springfield language, and have them report back through the superintendent on what their recommendations are.
May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So the example from Springfield is, discusses that it results in the cancellation of the event? And is that, is that the appropriate recourse? So I would, I would just want us to think about that as opposed to talking to the, you know, the person who, the applicant, and making sure that there is appropriate handling of situations like that.
That part is happening under the principal's investigation.
Okay. So I'm just wondering how to address that, because this particular issue shouldn't result in the pickleball organization not being able to participate because they have a bad act.
Can I, can I come back?
Yeah, yep.
And we're not suggesting that it go right to that change. We just started to look at other school districts in the area, and we're just asking you to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And say, because it is very vague and very open, and just, you know, what are we, what are we saying is okay to do? Like, is that okay to accept that? Is that okay that I have to accept that this stranger addressed my child this way? I mean, not a coach in this town, not a, not a teacher, not anybody. Not, I don't even think, I don't think he's from this town. So do we have to accept this? So what we did is we said, well, what are other areas doing?
No, I understand that.
You know, so.
Just a question about the recourse.
Right, right. Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, that would be up to you to decide what that would be, but all we did was just pull out an example of what other people put in there.
And it might be adding something that mirrors our progressive, how we would handle a student issue during school hours.
Yeah. I just don't think it's food for thought as we.
I would think the language would be, should be, and the behavior should be mirrored to as if schools in session. You opposed to pontificate?
Wow. Icy tonight. I was going to suggest maybe we should go see if there's an MASC suggested policy on buildings and ground use, and if that's something.
My guess is that's where this came from, because it's KF.
There is.
I would guess. So I think we should probably, I mean, I think this is definitely an agenda item we should address. And, you know, just keeping in mind, as to Margaret said, we got to look at, I think the careful thing to look at is, you know, what happened to Avery was unacceptable. There's no doubt about that.
Yes.
I think we're all would agree to that. I just think the question we need to be addressing is, what is the role of the school committee specifically in handing individual behavior versus granting authority? Now, my personal feelings on most of these issues would be, when we're granting authority in set policies, that behaviors that would result in inappropriate termination, we're here to grant or not grant authority for a group to go in. So my reading would be, if we're granting pickleball or any organization to go in there, take whatever it is, even if it's a, you know, let's say a heavy metal rock concert wanted to go in there at 11 o'clock on a Friday night during the summer, we wouldn't police the individual behavior of an individual in the concert, but if someone acted out, we would go to the event organizers and say, why is this happening? And what is, you know, what is the recourse from that? So I think there's just got to be that.
I wonder if there's any.
You know, looking at that, I agree. The policy should be updated. It would need to be looked at. I mean, there's no doubt about it. It should be reviewed.
And almost like a code of conduct, you attach the second page of the application, you sign off acknowledging.
That, you know, using this, we expect this is the type of behavior that is acceptable and unacceptable for your participants, and if your participants don't obey by it, everyone's gone.
Yeah. That's what I was going to suggest, is perhaps there's a code of conduct that could be attached, so that if there's a violation, again, it's a question of, are we policing individual behaviors, or is it the organization going to that person and addressing it in some way?
And then if they fail to do that, it escalates.
If they fail to do that, it escalates.
Yeah. MASC, MASC handles it very differently, so it'll be interesting when we have our discussion.
So is there a motion to refer Policy KF to the superintendent to work with resources to report back? Yeah.
Okay. So what is the policy?
KF.
KF. All right. So I move that the superintendent take Policy KF and work on it with council in light of this situation that's brought to our attention.
Motion made by, Kim? Is there a second? Second by Margaret? Need discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. That'll probably be, it might be on the next month's agenda, but then it would definitely be on the month after that, when it comes back with the revisions.
Thank you.
Did you want to talk? Public? Before I close, public? Okay. Circulation of warrants.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Can I have your name, please? Steffi, S-T-E-P-H-Y, Cho, C-H-O.
C-H-O.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have any circulations of warrants here. I did receive a warrant electronically today for $45,000 from February that I signed off on.
Yep.
Any, any announce, okay, perfect. Any announcements of correspondence? The only, I did, as chair, I did receive correspondence that I'm not at liberty to discuss, but there will be an executive session forthcoming to share with the other committee members.
Okay. All righty then.
Put that on the record. Principal's report.
Okay. Should be in your packet. Principal's report for March 13th. We had a half-day on Friday, March 8th, for professional development. Teachers met in vertical teams, so preschool met with first grade, and then there was opportunity for first to meet with second and all the way up to sixth grade to discuss curriculum gaps when transitioning students to the next grade, so what teachers find students might be lacking when they come to the next grade level. And we will review these findings this week during our grade level meetings, which are Thursday and Friday. Grade three students will be visiting Stewart and Village Museum in the next few weeks. I know one grade three classroom went today. They had a great time. They participate in a living museum experience and learn about life in colonial times. They visit different buildings, including the meeting house, the blacksmith shop, family home, and more. They will participate, learn about different activities that children in colonial times would have done. Grades five and six will travel to Hampshire Regional to see the preview of the musical Mary Poppins on March 19th. Kindergarten students will explore force motion and stability at Roots Gymnastics Center on March 25th. Students will later share their experience and participate in a writing activity about their visit when they get back to class. The grade six quidditch tournament will be held on Tuesday, April 9th. Staff will play against the students that evening. And our MCAS testing, which first is ELA and then math, begins on Tuesday, March 26th, with grade six going first. A schedule for all testing went home to parents. Our enrollment is steady at $479. That's the same number as last month. However, we had a couple shifts, but it ended up being the same, so we didn't lose anyone. Any questions?
Nope. Okay. Superintendent's report.
Most of you have heard what I'm going to say, so I'll try to make that brief. Well, Commissioner has resigned, and his last day will be March 15th. And he's done a lot. He's mostly known for all of his decisions related to COVID and masking and when we've been returned, as well as the new MCAS civics test that's coming out. In the business office, we have numerous updates. So Teresa Turner is our new accounts payable person, and we've had quite a few overdue invoices come to my attention in the last month. And together with Donna Lawrence, they both have done a great job of getting us caught up to speed. So we're almost there. They thought it might take until April 1st to get caught up, but I think that they will exceed those expectations. So Rachel Senadella has been working with somebody who's been hired as a short-term temp. Her name is Kim, and payroll, I have yet to meet her. I think she works remotely, so Rachel Senadella's been training her. However, we did just hire somebody for the payroll specialist, who will start April 1st. I announced the name, but I'm not sure if this person has told their employer yet, so I'd rather not say. But this person has previous experience with payroll. So in the future, we're going to be having the positions split between payroll and benefits, and then HR and benefits. Rachel Emerson will do the HR benefits part. We'll have both job descriptions approved by the all districts committee sometime in April, but she's been busy working the last month on getting everybody caught up with MTRS, various leave issues, grievances, so she's been a huge help. So I appreciate that. We do have a business manager and the assistant business administrator posted on a few different locations. School Spring, MASs, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and the most recently on Handshake, which is the UMass Job Posting Board. I have not checked it today, but five or six people have already applied for both of the positions combined, and we are interviewing somebody who has an MBA and is a certified accountant for the assistant business manager job on Tuesday. And it's, I think he's a former, he's a former alumni of the high school as well. So fingers crossed that that works out. So Mary Jane Rixson, the assistant superintendent, I, we have taken all the responsibilities for HR, the daily payroll things, and really securing staffing for 25. So for next year's staffing, we do have secured Kami Lenika, who is currently our treasurer. She has agreed to, she does not want to be a business administrator, but she would happily be a mentor and a guide and do on-the-job training for anybody we hire for business administrator or assistant business administrator. And although she's kind of pricey, she thinks in the beginning it'll just be one day a week, and then it'll taper off to a couple of hours a week. And we do have to pay for mileage as well. And Mass Unitin has agreed that they will, if the school committees agree, for the entire FY25 school budget, school year, finish off end-of-year reports for '24, and get the books all set, and assist throughout the whole school year for FY25. I think it also depends on who you hire for a business administrator and assistant business administrator. I did ask her to send me the current contract, so we can look at the wording and see, because I don't want you to be, it's a hefty price tag, so I just want to make sure we have everything that we need in place there. Mary Jane Nicole have been working with academic discoveries about our pre-K programming, and I think they did go over some general audit recommendations with them that I haven't discussed with them yet. But they will be interviewing parents and setting up focus groups to get some further data points before they come up with specific recommendations. Spring MCAS, we just updated the district student handbook. We put all the laws, we already had one, but there were some things that were missing. So all the schools will use the same handbook, and there will be a link for each specific school. But a lot of the policies are the same across the board, so we just thought we would streamline that process and be a little bit more collaborative in that, so everybody had a hand in that. And we did submit that for tiered focus monitoring, and we'll probably bring it to your attention in April or May. And that's the, that's pretty much it. We've just been doing central office budget things.
Any questions? Chairs' report. I think everybody's up to speed, but we're just continuing, the all district committee is continuing to work on the situation in central office. Primary focus, at least from my point of view, is the budget. And I know there's ongoing work about the potential revisions or language of the district discussion as we move forward, and it's just, it's very fluid, changing every day. I'm assuming nobody has any questions on that.
So many questions.
Rachel, update?
Oh, nothing's happened up there. Quick meetings, 25, 30 minutes, in and out.
Yep. If you take the budget stuff out of our meetings, there are no meanings.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's exactly it. I'd say the, I mean, I can't even keep the, how many meetings have we had since we last met here? Two, three, four? I would say it's primarily around the issues of budget and budget-related, budget and budget accessories?
Yes.
I think would be, would be.
Yes.
The primary discussion, we continue policy review up at the high school. You know, one of the things that we've talked about is, oh, there's been a discussion on the superintendent search that has taken a good amount of time up at the meeting as well, which, discussions go back to ABC. You know.
I do have a question.
Please.
That I don't know the answer to, but I got asked. Can you, can you provide any update on closure or finalizing of the contract? Of the uni contract? Just to the extent of public, you know, what stage?
What I'm thinking, let me think. I would say negotiations are ongoing. I don't have any sort of set.
Okay.
I can't say anything for.
Yeah, we're currently in mediation.
That's it. Yeah, it's in mediation.
Yep. Our next session is the end of this month.
I was, never mind. It's not, not, it's not an update. I think I, I can't keep everything. Am I missing anything major? I mean, that's kind of been the vast majority of the.
Yep.
Good. PTO?
PTO. Met last night. And it was actually pretty cool, because there were several teacher requests, staff requests for funding, and they have done such, geez, such a great job of fundraising that they can, they can really approve anything that people need, which is incredibly cool that they're able to support the school that way. The big thing that they have coming up is that they need to recruit new people, and so the, the April meeting is, would normally be April 9th, but that's quidditch night, so they moved their meeting to April 8th. And this is going to be kind of a special meeting. It's going to be, it's an opportunity, it's sort of a meet and greet, so they're hoping that people who are interested in becoming involved with PTO will come to that meeting. They're going to put out a little spread. There's going to be a door prize for new people who show up. They are looking for people to volunteer to do different events and things like that, but they also need a chair, a co-chair, a secretary, and at-large members. So anybody watching at home, feel free, April 8th, to go to the Norris PTO meeting. They'd be happy to have you. That's all I got.
Okay. And then just, the, just for informational purposes, so the cameras work on which mic is picking up the voice?
Got it.
So. School council.
So we had a great meeting.
We're continuing work on the school improvement plan, coming up with very actionable items and ways to make sure that we're strategically proceeding. So it was very positive.
It was very good. Next meeting, March 25.
Okay. And we are going to pass on collaborative. And then select board update, again, it's the same story. So request for, capital committee is meeting next Thursday. I know Norris has some requests in there. Take that up. Finance is meeting Tuesday night and Thursday night. Thursday night's a joint session. There's a tentative placeholder there for the school, for the Norris budget. We'll talk about that, I guess, probably next. And we're just plugging away. The, so the, actually on the select board update, because I don't believe I shared it with all, it'd be part of Friday's update, is last night as select board member, I asked for a specific detailed list from the town accountant of what are the outstanding items as they relate to the schools to closing our books. I got that this morning. I forwarded it on to Deanna and Mary Jane and copied the other chairs, as well as our town accountant and town administrator, suggesting that they do the same thing so that we can, I think, I believe, central office knows what they think they owe us, and hopefully they reconcile the two, and everybody has things. But in the event that we have things on our list that we're waiting for that no one's even thought of yet, we can try and get on the same page. And then I just suggested for the other towns that they do the same thing instead of waiting so that we can compile a list of things that just need to be done and plug away with them. So ours, ours are pretty much all grant and the revolving accounts. When the revolving accounts until '22 is closed, I could self-populate and carry forward. So, but I'll, I'll share all that data with you guys if you're interested. Under budget, we, I received an email this afternoon from our business minister that Diddy, for personal reasons, is unable to attend tonight. We don't have any further update other than what we received last month.
Right.
Which was, I would say maybe 10% accurate. There were a lot of, you know, 2% assumptions there, but.
Yeah.
So we need the data on there. So my, it's kind of leading into the discussion on a potential outcome if we fail to propose a budget. So there's two things there. The, whether, whether we, we have to have something to put up to the voters. And this is separate from whether it fails in the two towns and how we go through the 12-day extension and all that, the 15-day extension, is ultimately, I guess, worst-case scenario is, is what would happen is we'd get a 1/12 budget, which is decided by the commissioner of education, and it's the expiring budget with their adjustments. So I would envision, if the, if, make a number, it's X. If the contractual wages increase by X, that that's going to be on that line item, right? And then there's probably, there's going to be some other, it's going to be out of our control on what these numbers are going to be.
Yeah.
So to me, that's not a favorable outcome. That being said, we have a bylaw for Southampton that says the budget has to be submitted no later than April 1st. So if we work backwards from that, we could meet on April 1st if needed to be. And so assume we are meeting on April 1st, which is a Monday.
And three out of the five of us would be up at Hampshire Regional for our meeting.
On the 1st?
Yes.
Well, let's forget the fact that it's my birthday, and I shouldn't even be here.
Oh, my goodness, John.
I'm on every calendar, April Fools. I held out for three weeks. Now see you, now we're going off track here. But let's just use that date, right? We got to, we'd have to have our final vote on that Friday, March 29th, which is Good Friday, because that's Easter weekend. And.
Do I just have to have the final vote?
In order, in order to meet on the 1st, we have, we have to hold a public hearing and vote on that ahead of time.
Okay.
I suppose possibly we could do it on the same day, but in my mind, it would be Friday, 29th would be the public hearing, which Kimberly has clarified requires seven-day public notice. So now we're back to next Friday, we have to have our final budget voted on here so we can publish and make available to the public.
Well, making it available to the public, so the date and time of the public hearing has to be seven days ahead.
Right, 48 hours.
The budget has to be available 48 hours before the public hearing.
Right.
So theoretically, we could, we could publish on March 22nd saying that we are having this public hearing on March 29th, and we'd have to have the document available to people by March 27th.
Right. But before we do any of that, we need a budget. So.
So.
Other than, other than Eliza, what you reported last month, have you, do you have any further advanced budgets other than what we were given?
No.
Okay. So we're in a conundrum, and the only thing I can think of, and I'm open to suggestions, is we create our own budget, which is not, is going to be easy to do, because we don't necessarily have access to all the data that we need. But we know what the contracts are. We know what their current rates, where their steps are. We can mathematically calculate out very easily the wages for all staff. I would argue that's 70% of the budget.
It would be, yes.
We know the busing is going up by 5% because we signed that con, you know, we know certain things that we can put in there. Maybe we hold the books flat at 40,000 as a start to fill in these things, but we come up with something. The, but it's not really a lot of time, and every day next week, I have a night meeting. So I do have 8:00 AM till noon on Tuesday open if we want to invade Principal Pluta's office with our laptops and build a budget by lunch.
The 19th?
Not a vacation day, right?
I have an oncology appointment.
No. I could do that.
What do you guys think?
I would like to help. I unfortunately have a doctor's appointment that morning, so I'm out of pocket.
I can help.
We can start that, and then if we have an overflow? So then my question is.
Yeah, I could be there for like an hour.
Okay. So then.
But we still have to have a meeting to.
The flip side of that is I'm not really in favor of meeting on Good Friday. Well, A, I'm not in favor of meeting on Fridays. But the fact that it's Good Friday, it's a holiday weekend, I mean, so then I would back this up to Thursdays, but I'm sure we all, finance and.
Sorry.
Select order meeting that night at 6:00, so.
John, I think we did have March 27th at Wednesday at 5:30 reserved for Norris.
But that would be.
The public hearing.
That would have to be the public, which means seven days prior to the 20th, we'd have to have our budget done. Right?
No, we'd have, on the 20th, we'd have to publish the public hearing notice for the 27th, and we'd have to have the budget done by the 25th.
Oh, so you're saying, so we can put, we can pick a date without actually having our first meeting.
Yes.
To approve the budget, okay.
Don't do that.
That's correct. And the key thing is to get it available, to post it and then have it available.
Right. The seven-day posting.
Forty-eight hours.
And the 48-hour ahead of time, the document being there.
Still needing to legal appointments.
Does Wednesday, the 27th, right now, work for everybody to have?
The public hearing?
The public hearing.
Think so?
Yeah.
I would imagine it's going to be an hour. You know what? I don't know anymore. Past practice was, nobody came, questioned anything.
So March 27th at 6:00 is what we're thinking?
Yeah.
Yep.
So then if we go backwards, we could be, if we're going to meet on Tuesday, the 19th, we issue publication on the 20th. I mean, we have the 20th, 21st, 22nd.
But if we got to publish on 20th, we got to get our notice in probably in the next two days.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll email Rachel.
So could we even meet on Monday, the 25th? That would be.
Monday, the 25th, no. Monday, the 25th is the superintendent search committee selection. Can we meet on the 20th?
I got a meeting, I got a person meeting at 6:00, but that's fairly quick.
I got personnel at 6:00. That should be.
All right.
So I could, I could be 6:30.
6:30.
I could do 7:00.
7:00.
I thought probably 7:00 I could do.
So March 20th at 7:00 o'clock would be our meeting? So that's a week from, a week from today to look at a budget.
Right, which means we're going to, on Tuesday, we're going to create, well.
Is that, is that a public meeting? Is that a meeting, meeting?
That would be, that would be a special school committee meeting solely for the budget.
Okay. And then the 27th is the public hearing?
Would be the public hearing.
And we're going to develop a budget on Tuesday morning? Or try to, between Tuesday morning and?
Yeah, well, I can start working out in advance. I mean, especially, if I can get.
Did you get anything?
No, I didn't. So I can reach out to the town treasurer, I guess, and try that way and see, give a list of all Norris employees and what they're currently being paid. And then, and it should tie to the contracts. Somebody can validate it afterwards. I did get an email from Mickey. He knows that that's a priority. He indicates he's going to work with you and I think Mary, Mary Jane, and have it to us on Monday when he comes back.
Can I see clarification for a second?
Sure.
So March 20th, we're going to post for the hearing. That's the following Wednesday. And also that evening, you're going to have a special meeting to view the budget, and that's at 6:00 PM.
That one's at 7:00.
That one's at 7:00. Okay. I can add it because I've got Williamsburg School Committee. And the 20th is the thing that has to go in the Gazette. Like, that's the public hearing notice. Has to go in on the 20th for the 27th.
Yep, got it.
There's no reason why it could go sooner.
It could go sooner, but no later than 20. Yeah, I'll email Rachel right now.
So the 20th is at 7?
So the 20th is at 7, and the 27th is at 6? Or am I missing that? That's correct? Okay.
So 20th is at 7?
Yes.
When you say you publish it to the.
Because, public hearings, when you, when you use that, oh, go ahead.
Like, you say you have to publish the budget.
The budget has to be, we have to publish the notice that we're going to have the public hearing.
Oh.
That has to go on paper, and then a physical.
It goes on paper.
Right, of general circulation. And then a actual copy of the budget has to be available 48 hours before for public inspection, should any, maybe the public want to look at it.
And where would the public look at it?
Usually in the superintendent's office.
Yeah. You could, you could come on the 20th and learn all about it.
No, no, no. So I was just curious, because a lot of things are said, like, this is the public hearing for, and like, you guys talk about stuff in this packet that's here, but like, unless you're me, you never see this and you never know about it.
Well, no, we don't have TV.
Well, right, except this part. So I'm just curious of when you say it's posted for the public, like, what does that mean, or how does one go about to find that for people that don't know?
Yeah. Well, the, and the notice in the newspaper will specify the locations that you can get a copy or access the document.
So you've got to give that to central office to be sure they have that language?
Yes.
Yep.
So March 19th, we're in Eliza's office to work on the budget? And what time are we doing that?
What time works for you?
8:30, 9:00, whatever.
When is arrival time for students?
8:35.
8:35, all right, so.
Why don't we do 9:00? So all that's done.
So 9:00 on?
The 19th.
The 19th.
I have a meeting, but I'll cancel, I'll not go to that meeting.
Does that need to be posted as well? No.
Well.
Depends on how many of us are there.
Right.
I'm glad they not come if that meeting.
I think it's just going to be two of us, and Margaret is just going to pop in and cheer, cheers on.
Yeah. I'll probably pop in, then go out, and then pop back in.
Yeah. Okay, so then.
Question numbers ahead of time, too, if you need.
Yeah, so am I.
4:20, we're going to do 7:00 PM.
Four, yeah, four, five, 3:20, is it 7?
Oh, I'm right in April. Three, three, and 3:27, is that 6:00 PM?
3:27.
Yeah. And then, so actually, 3:21 is when finance and select board will meet, so I'll notify Chris to add the school to the budget hearing, so the town can have its budget hearing.
Wait a minute, what? We're meeting on the 20th to do, to?
Pass the preliminary budget.
Right, it's not the public hearing for the budget.
I hope. Let them see it at that point. If they have any feedback, they can certainly give it to us, but.
Oh, okay. So does that mean we have to go to a meeting on the 21st, too? Or are you handling that as in your many hats that you wear?
I don't have a problem. Running point on that. But if anyone's lonely and wants to get out.
I'm not sure I'm that lonely.
Wow. I don't know how to answer that.
All right, so that, that'll be our game plan. I mean, if there's, I'm pretty sure what Mickey shared with us last time is all in Excel, so I'll just start building off of his, and then.
And John, for the 27th, do you want to post it as hearing and vote?
Public hearing, yeah, public hearing and vote.
So it needs date, time, location.
It's almost a copy and paste from the language, right?
Yeah, it's just date, time, location, and does it have to, do we need, does the public notice have to say where they can get a copy of it ahead of time?
Well, actually, it says 48 hours either at the office of superintendent of schools or at a place so designated by said committee. So I would, yeah, I would specify in there where it's available, yeah. I mean, and for ease of town residents, we can put, we can give a town, a copy to the town clerk.
All right, why don't we do that? But, but I'm just saying, like, that, all that line we tested.
Yeah. So Deanna, can you just ask Rachel to share with me the draft before she sends it to the paper?
Sure.
See, so our public meeting's the 27th at 7?
6.
6:00, sorry. So that means 48 would be 6:00, okay, that's fine. I was saying, because townhouse closed on Friday, so if our 48 hours hit Friday, we can't put it here, we have to put it, but doesn't, I think we're good, as long as it's.
Yeah, we're good. Glad to follow that, then.
Anything else on budgets?
Neither can we.
New school, put it right in there, line item.
John's regionalization.
I like the way you think, Kim.
I know you do, that's why I'm here, John.
I was going to add, that's my regional update. I brought up regionalization at the last regional meeting, and I got groans from across the room.
Not from that, because you bring it up every other meeting.
Well, you know, it was, it was more the reference to our, our buddy here that.
I've been saying something for three years, and now finally more people are coming on board. Okay. New business, reconsideration fiscal year '25 academic calendar, which was accepted on February 15, 2024. So I put, I put this on here after, obviously after our meeting, but I then heard from one member of the committee, who remain nameless, and it wasn't me, who said that potentially, taking a step back, they may rethink it. So it's there if we want to do something with it, it's there if we don't.
But we have to make that correction, though, because we've got Martin Luther King Junior Day on the wrong there.
Yeah, there are errors on it, so.
Yeah, so we talk about calendars, right?
Yeah.
She gave you the wrong one, but I just emailed everybody the correct one.
Okay.
The only change is on January, instead of January 13th and the 14th being in blue, being a holiday professional development, it's going to be the 20th is the holiday. We were off by a week, unfortunately, for Martin Luther King Day. And the 21st will be a PD day. Let me see if this matches on the right side. It does not, so we will fix it over here to, so that's 20th, and I'll fix it on the right-hand side. Okay, so that's January 20th and 21, and 17 is not in bold.
Okay. So one question that I have now that I didn't have then is, and maybe I'm just imagining Okay, so, one question that I have now, that I didn't have then, is, and maybe I'm just imagining this, but first day of school is listed September 3rd, right, and it says first day for students, but that's not all students, right? Don't they, Kate, they come before or after, right?
Preschool comes a week later.
A week later, okay.
So, do we need to say first day for preschool?
On the 9th?
Just to make it really clear for parents who are looking at it?
Yes.
We could add that.
Just over on the side.
And usually, they start on the Tuesday after Labor Day, but maybe now they start on the 9th.
Yeah, I think it'd probably be a good idea.
Right, whatever the date is, if it's not the 3rd, to plug it in there, yeah.
So, indicate first days K through 6, and then 9, whatever day is first day for preschool. I, yeah, that definitely needs to go on there.
Or do we say the 10th?
For students.
Whatever day, whatever date you guys decide on, it would, but we have to prove it, so... 10?
Elisa, do you say September 7th?
September 7th?
For preschool?
9th.
No.
9th, we're considering the 9th.
You say 9th, okay, I'll make that pink, too.
Do it on Monday, make it a full week.
Yeah.
Without objection from building principal?
Yeah, September 9th.
Are we, are we staying with the 3rd as a start?
So, I was, I think, the one who may have said, I had some thoughts in the reconsidering this, and then I went back after, looked at the dates again, and I looked, my original thought was to look retroactively and see what had been done in previous years. I did not do that far back at all, but I decided to look proactively in what future years are gonna bring for us. I think regardless of what the high school contract says, we're gonna be hovering around that Labor Day start time for at least a couple more years. We are, and next year, we're in almost the exact same circumstance, if we're tied to that 28th date for the high school, and, um, we're also then in 2026, looking at a similar situation. I don't love the idea of starting later on and the potential of running into late June, especially with the Juneteenth holiday now being on the calendar. But I do also have concerns that as a district, deviating, not just because of the high school situation, I mean, we have different PD days, we have different half-days there, but more the issue of, it is three days, and we'd be looking for exceptions from school buses, two to three days, that would cause transportation issues from the bus company, I think. And, you know, and potentially, if we don't have snow days, it puts us out again in the situation we are this year, which is, the kids are gonna be out wicked early.
Yeah.
So, you know, after...
We've used all our snow days.
We used two, we only had two.
Last day of school's like June 14th right now.
There's some happy kids.
Happy kids, not so happy parents.
Yeah, get out sooner.
Some not so happy parents, some happy parents, some not so happy parents.
Am I allowed to comment on this?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, yes.
So, I guess, I guess my point was, I was the one who initially said, maybe we need to reconsider this. After more thought, I don't see deviating from the rest of the district as a wise decision. But that's just my thought.
Jennifer Johnson, three children in school. So, I actually talked to a bunch of parents about this, because I think it's odd, because it has been that they've all started before Labor Day, since my kids have been at that school, and my daughter's in fifth grade now. And a lot of the parents also have kids at high school, and their point was, I know a lot of, they asked me, like, what your reasons were for not wanting to change it to how it previously was and how the teachers said they would prefer it to be. And I said that your answers were that you were concerned about older kids babysitting younger kids and that whole dilemma. And a lot of them pointed out for their high school kids, for the majority of them that play a sport, they're all in sports and in captains' practices and in all of those things, that week anyway. So, the likelihood of a lot of people still being on vacation is not so much the case. They also said that it's not your job to worry about their children's babysitting issues, and that's their issue to worry about. I think that if someone leads the pack forward, that yes, maybe the high school can't change their contract, and they have to start when they have to start, but all the other elementary schools could say, great, you do that, and then, like, West Hampton wanted to change it, I don't know what their situation was, then all of the elementary schools could be that they start the three days, like they did before, the four days, and then the five days. If that's not how it wants to be and you all want to be there, then is there a benefit to taking those five days that we never use out of the bus contract? Like, is that some sort of, like, money thing that they get for those five days to be able to switch around things for us? And if we're not using them, is that a way to save money somewhere and add it to somewhere else? Like, why do we have it if we're not using it, and why are we afraid to use it if we have it?
So, on that particular point, the contract allows us up to five-day variation without incurring additional cost.
Right, but is that, like, if you just take that out?
There's no reduction in cost.
Okay, okay, so...
We go to day 6, I mean, we could do 10 days, but day 6 through 10, we would, there's a formula in there.
Right, there was a payment that has to be made, correct. So, I don't know, that's just my two cents on that. I know a lot of people, when I said, hey, this is the proposed and voted-on calendar, and they were like, why the, why are we starting that late? Like, what's the deal? And I understand that it's gonna be that way for the next few years, but, like, it doesn't have to be for these kids. Like, it can, and I, I don't think June 14th is honestly really, like, that early, and heaven forbid, it is only March, and there's always usually at least one more snow day to kill us between here and April. So, those are my thoughts.
Deanna, have the other elementary schools already approved their calendars?
Well, first, I want to say, we, um, we absolutely recognize your concerns, and the principals and I kind of debated back and forth, do we have to start on the same day? I think we would have to pay for an extra day of busing, and while, you know, we would hear, we would hear parents advocating for it, one way or the other. And I think when we gave this to unions, this is what they had preferred, but, right, it is a sticky thing. At the elementary levels, Chesterfield Goshen has approved.
Williamsburg approved.
Which one did?
Williamsburg.
Right.
Williamsburg, and I think West Hampton saw it a couple months ago, but I'm not, I can't remember right now.
It might have approved it last night, I can't remember.
But I thought the, I thought the Southampton Teachers Union was in favor of backing this up.
Yeah.
Right.
And they also wanted, if I recall correctly, if we couldn't back it up with kids, then teachers would work that Friday. And not work Thursday and then have Friday off.
That's my next question, because traditionally, that holiday weekend, you get the Monday off, which we have, why are we coming in on a Thursday and not the Friday?
Are you talking about August 29th?
Yeah.
Uh, well, so, at the high school, their contract states that they start on that Wednesday, the 28th, and they have two professional development days.
Oh, all right, so, can I, does the contract say that's the start date, or it says they can't start before that, that date, or?
Or it's prior to August.
Prior to that date, so they can start home that day.
Or could do the 29th, or could do the 30th, right, it doesn't have to be the 28th of August, right, okay.
And then we thought, geez, should we have students come on the 30th? And then we thought, okay, well, one day, and then it's a long weekend, does that, does that make sense? So, I felt our hands were tied either, either way, so whatever you'd like to do is, is fine.
Do you have the bus contract language there, so you're 100% sure of this budget?
No, I, no, I stopped looking for it, but...
Okay, that's the only reason I would hesitate, is because I would just like verification that that's actually in the contract, because for so many years, it was, we have to do it this way because of the bus contract. Well, you would have to pay extra.
Even somebody with a district...
Well, because if...
My memory says, the busing contract says that we can have an alternate schedule up to five days from the high school before additional costs is incurred on us.
I'd have to look that up.
Right.
I do worry, though, that, because if you do have to pay, it's quite expensive, but that is a good question. Well, I mean, I'm okay if we can verify that that language actually exists, is my, that's my concern.
So, I'm hearing two...
I mean, I don't think we can even think about, my thing is, I don't even want to consider making the, a very, a start date that's different than the high school until we know.
Right.
Well, start, start date for students or start date for teachers, that's where I think we have two different discussions going.
Well, right, right, so, start, I mean, I think the families are concerned about start date for students.
Yes.
And that's what the concern is, that it has come to us, and so, because, and it's students that are on the buses, the teachers are getting there themselves. So, I just feel like it's important to know that that actually exists.
And, so, the concern for the parents is the temperature in the building? Is that the primary concern for going later in June?
That, that top floor in that building is miserable.
That is true.
And now, is that also a problem in August, because of heat in August?
Yeah, but it's a much shorter window, and you're only having, like, two or three days. And their thought is, like, you'd have two or three days where you get all the stupid paperwork-y type stuff done, and you have, the next week, you have four days that you get, like, your routine stuff done, and by the third week of school, you've got a full week, and you're hitting the ground running, starting with full academics, kind of a thing.
I think that, that was generally, was the heat was definitely part of it, that's the conversation that I heard, but again, that's what Jen said, it's that whole, I think a lot of the elementary school students, or the parents felt that that three, four, five-day ramp-up was a more beneficial way to start.
Transition.
Right.
Transition, sure, thank you, and...
Having the kids there on Thursday and Friday lets them get all that energy in and out of it, so then on Tuesday, they start work, versus now, it'll be Tuesday, Wednesday.
Well, the other concern was when you went to the Juneteenth, with Juneteenth there, if you have a very heavy snow winter, are you bumping up around, I don't know what our contract says about the last possible day to teach?
Has to be June 30th, because it, yeah, I think that's the state law.
Yeah, so, we're bumping now, 1, 2, 3, 4, well, you're June 25th, I mean, you go over that, though, and you're in trouble.
Well, if we do this this year, we will have to probably do it for the next two years as well, according to the calendar.
At least, well, next year, most definitely, 2026 is weird, because September 1 is a Tuesday, which means Labor Day is very late, it's the 7th. So, it creates another weird, I mean, we could start that week without a problem.
Oh, yeah, easily.
But then it's that weird, you're still starting in September.
Right.
I mean, I guess I don't have strong feelings about it either way, to me, I think I see the benefits of both of them, I mean, I agree that there's...
I think it depends on the bus contract, so...
Yeah, I agree, too.
If we can get that clarified, one way or the other, then I could, I could be up for changing it.
Oh, hold on, hold on.
I'm reading the contract now, but it's 101 pages.
All right, so, on, for what it's worth, on March 13th, 2020, I asked Bobby, for Tuesday night's meeting, could you tell me, tell me what, if any, impact from a money standpoint would there be if the committee opted Tuesday night to cancel April vacation in light of the two-week closure being announced today? Bobby's response, yeah, "Our contract allows for days to be added or taken away, so we will be okay financially with the buses. If we don't make up the days, we will deduct the days from the contract amount. If we were to cancel April break, that would add those days back in." What does it really?
It doesn't answer.
Answer, yeah, so...
Help, but that was an interesting historical factoid where we were four years ago.
Shows that I don't delete my emails.
Yeah, I was trying to find, and we've also, we've also gotten a new bus contract since then.
So, correct, the, so, issue number one, students starting. I mean, we are coming back on Wednesday, I mean, if clarification be given.
And I think the second clarifying question would be, if we are in fact allowed five days, right, as your suspicion is, if we move the start date back to August 28th, which would be a three-day deviation in August, does that also count as a three-day deviation in June?
That was my question, too.
A six-day, or is it a three-day deviation?
Oh, that's a good question.
No, it's, it's days that we have busing that nobody else does.
But then there's gonna be, there's gonna be three days that everyone else is busing.
But that's not, that's not out of our allowances, out of Hampshire Regional allowance.
So, this is, I did find something.
The buses if we don't.
It says, "School closings notwithstanding, the school year shall require 180 days of service. In the event the school year is longer or shorter than 180 days, the annual contract total shall be adjusted by the daily unit cost per vehicle."
But our days is only 180 days.
Again, that doesn't, it was just 180 different days.
It has to, there's something, it has to be.
Do you want to, you want to shoot me the contract?
Well, I found one, this was, yeah.
Is it within the last two years, signed?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send it to you.
Yeah, fingers crossed.
Do you all want it?
I don't.
We should be on a chair drive.
Yeah, just share it with us.
Depending on what we do, whether we, whether we do something or don't do anything, it holds the question about whether or not teachers are going back on Thursday or Friday.
Yeah.
Right now, it's Thursday. I mean, obviously, if we back it up and the kids are there, teachers are gonna be there. If we leave students where they are, and we tell teachers, I guess that's the other thing, can we, could, Elisa, could you confirm, was it the Southampton Teachers Union's desire to have their professional development on Friday, or stay with the Thursday?
I believe their desire was to have it on Friday.
I can, you don't, didn't they want to choose?
They are, and that's what the union, I don't see how that impacts anybody else.
Everybody comes Thursday, or everybody comes...
I'll check my emails, because I know Elizabeth did write me about that.
So, if, if the students come back on the 28th, would the PD day or the teacher day be the 27th?
27th, yes.
Right, that's what I was wondering, the 28th, they come back, and they have their PD, it's, it's really a meeting with me and then time in the rooms, and then Thursday, Friday, the kids, that's what you're thinking?
We were thinking 27th, they come back, kids come back 28th, right, or were we thinking?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Kids come back for three days?
Three days.
No.
No, I think two.
Two days, right.
Two days, what?
Two days?
You want, you want Wednesday?
That means students coming back for 26th.
No, no, I, I had it right. The teachers will come back the 27th, students start the 28th, so the students have a three-day week, teachers have a four-day week.
Okay.
That's option one. We're not, we're not gonna vote on any options tonight.
No.
We're gonna get clarification for Wednesday.
All right, so this is gonna be on our agenda Wednesday night?
Well, it seems to me like we, everybody wants these issues clarified with documents, which is reasonable.
Oh, yeah, no, I just want, so, we have to schedule vacations and all their other stuff.
Can I, I found what Elizabeth wrote to me in the beginning of January. She wrote, these are her suggestions, "Starting with students after Labor Day will cause our school year to run far into June if there are any snow days. We suggest Norris start with students prior to Labor Day. We prefer teachers' support staff to return on Tuesday or Wednesday, August 27th or 28th, and for students to begin on Wednesday or Thursday, the 28th or 29th. We understand this may be different from school, from the high school. If the student's start date cannot be changed, Norris teachers would prefer to start on Friday, August 30th, rather than start on Thursday, the 29th, with a vacation day following. We've never had a built-in vacation day in our schedule before, and we don't want to move forward with that practice."
Okay.
So, I guess the 28th's always been because of the high school, but you, you can do whatever you'd like to do.
Right, but we, we gotta make sure there's not a financial impact on the bus side, so...
And whether, when students are three days or two days?
Yeah, I'm happy, as far as the bus, I'm happy to look through it, find the language highlight, and then share it with everybody ahead of time.
Great, thank you.
But, can I ask you a question? The high school contract says the teachers can't start before the 28th.
Correct.
They can start on the 28th.
They can't start.
No sooner than the 28th.
So, if they had, how many professional developments, they have two?
Two, I think they have two.
So, if they start on Wednesday, it'd be Wednesday, Thursday, then they would, they didn't want students coming back for one day?
Right, that makes sense, okay, got it. I was gonna say, like, if they come back then, I didn't know if they had two days.
Yeah.
It would only be one day.
Yeah.
So, that was, that was my other question.
Yes, though...
My other, my last question on that was, you guys, I assume, do not do any district-wide PD on the days prior to school? I know you've wanted to, but there's...
Yeah, we had wanted to, but because everybody does not have two days, no, because if, every contract is different regardless...
As you'll recall, that was...
How much time in classrooms?
Rejected at the table last time for Norris, okay.
Can we, can we expand the radius of walkers to, like, 12 miles for the...
Oh, dear God, next. We did that once, remember?
Hey, I can bring some van, you can pick up.
Next item, discussion and vote, school choice, set maximum number of available seats. Elisa, you were gonna come back with a recommendation?
Yes. So, I don't think that we should open up any school of... Yes. So, I don't think that we should open up any school of choice spots in grades one through six, based on our numbers, but I do think we should open up school of choice spots in kindergarten, and I would say, at this time, no more than six. But if we use up those spots and students leave or don't come that we think are coming, if we could go up to another number, that would be okay with me.
So, what, what are we at now, 46 or 48?
Say that again?
I'm sorry, school of choice, 47, right? We're at 47 now with eight departing, which drops us to 39, and you're asking for six, which brings you up to 45.
Okay.
Right? So, would the vote be to set the maximum number of school choice children to 45?
Oh.
Say you, say you have a fourth grader drop out, right?
No.
Go ahead, go ahead. That gives you the six for pre-K, or for K, but then if anybody else drops out anywhere else, and you want to stick them...
We don't usually do, like, if someone drops out, then we open up a spot?
No, you could put them back into kindergarten.
But it would be a kindergarten have to drop out?
No.
Not a fourth grader?
No, no, we're just saying, your cap is 45. You're recommending six go into kindergarten. If everything else stays the same, that's all the space you have, you're at 45. If somebody in fifth grade drops, and you choose as the principal, that kindergarten is a spot, is that now, that new spot, that's your call, not ours.
Okay. I don't think we've ever looked at it that way before.
John, say that again, because I'm not sure that's...
Talking fast.
The maximum number of school choice children...
You can't do that. I already asked.
Well, then why are we voting on a number of seats?
You have to vote, unless I'm hearing you wrong, because I'm trying to write the email you asked. You have to cho, school choice seats per grade.
Okay.
You can't do 45 over, because it's a lottery system, and then how are you going to pick and choose what grade you want that? And it's not equitable.
So, all right, so then, I'll make a motion to authorize the principal to open up the lottery for six seats in kindergarten. Can we, can we set any discretion for the principal?
You could say, you could say...
Can we say six to eight seats?
Well, you could say up to a certain number, then if she only wants to fill six, she just fills...
Right, right. Last year, that's what you did. I think you did like, six and eight, or six and 10, or something.
Do we have any known siblings?
We have no siblings. It's amazing. And, we have, in my opinion, since I've been here, a record number of applications for kindergarten already at this time, that I've never seen like this before.
School choice.
For school choice?
School choice applications for kindergarten.
Wow.
So, six is good, but it's not, not, not everybody's going to be happy. What's happening?
Lumbras.
Oh, we're going to build a school? A pre-K center?
No, no, I'm just saying, with all the difficulties we're having with the budget, is this really the year to enter the Norris system?
Yes, it is. Every year is a good year to enter.
I think six is a safe number right now. I would, maybe we could go higher at some point, but with the census number, and the number of students we know are coming to kindergarten from preschool, I would like to say six, but up to...
Can we say up to 10?
We could say up to 10, and then if the students we think are coming don't end up coming, we have that space.
I, so, do you have a motion, or is there...
No, I withdraw mine. So, go ahead.
I move that we authorize up to 10 school of choice seats for entering kindergarten for school year 24, 25, with the total number of allotted seats at the discretion of the building principal.
Second.
Did you, seconded, seconded by Kim. Did you get all that? Okay, discussion, hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Next is, approve the salary range for the incoming superintendent. The range that has been proposed by the working committee, or by the advisor? Get it going committee, is a minimum of 175 to a maximum of 195. I'm sure everyone's aware, other committees have gone up and down and made adjustments and all that. I mean...
As far as I'm aware, only one committee has adjusted.
Correct.
Is that Williamsburg?
Correct.
Okay.
But, the, the budget, the central office budget right now, doesn't include a salary that goes that high.
But there is that contingency in the central office budget that would allow for...
It was, it was pretty wild last night. They, the mask, Liz Levon withdrew her statement that it was her recommendation for 175, 195, and Williamsburg adamant they aren't going to go over 180. And, there was a lot going on, but those are kind of the highlights.
So...
Oh, and then Mickey plugged in 195 into the superintendent salary in the budget.
So, my feeling is, for what it's worth, is this is the range that was recommended. It's a range, it's a starting point, and we won't know until we have a candidate whether we need to go that high. I suggest we let the committee have latitude to do it, and just like our budget, one committee has already lowered it, and that's fine. If three committees lower it to that number, we're stuck. But if the other committees stay with this proposal range, then they lose the vote.
My understanding, well, two things. Number one, my understanding is West Hampton has approved 175 to 195. Hampshire Regional has already approved 175 to 195. And, I would also ask, where exactly in the all-district agreements it says what happens when there's a disagreement amongst committees regarding what a salary range is posted for superintendent?
It does not, it's silent.
So, you go in pass practice.
So, pass practice.
So, I'm of the opinion, leave, I mean, leave room. If it's a superstar, give that person the top buck.
I agree.
Leave it as a tool.
I think...
I think it's a complicated district.
You have the head of the school committee, Mass Association School Committee, saying, initially, this is an appropriate range. So, I move that we authorize a salary range for the incoming superintendent to be posted of $175,000 to $195,000.
And that the appropriate placeholder be made in the budget to support that if awarded. Seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Appointment, appoint a member of the superintendent's search committee from the Norris local school committee. Who's going to step forward? Well, I nominate Julianne, she's not here. Actually, I will tell you too, I mean, she did communicate with me that her work schedule is becoming more and more complicated for these meetings, and that is also, she has reached a decision that she is not seeking reelection, and will be departing from the board. So, although this work will all be done prior to, well, I don't know.
Yeah, we don't know. That's...
So, okay, so she's out. So, do we delegate to the vice chair?
We could delegate the vice chair.
I will, I will be murdered. I will be murdered. Well, what's the time commitment?
30 to 50 hours over an eight-week period?
You're probably not wrong.
Yeah, my challenge is I have some vacation days that cannot be changed, and I'm concerned that that overlaps.
Do we, I don't know this answer. Is it safe to assume none of you are the Hampshire Regional person?
None of us are. It's Linda from Williamsburg.
Okay. And, does it have to be a school committee member, or do we appoint our person representing the school committee?
It's supposed to...
I think it probably should be a school committee.
You were so close to getting the appointment, Eliza.
The plan was... I mean, we are looking for an elementary, they are looking for an elementary principal as well, so it could be Eliza if she so, you know, if she throws her hat into the ring.
To serve on the committee?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I have a conflict with that March 25th date.
Well, actually, the March 25th date is not going to end up being the orientation date, because...
It's a conflict for you.
No, no, because what was supposed to happen is tomorrow night, the search committee was supposed, the five members were supposed to, the five school committee members were supposed to select the rest of the search committee, and then the 25th was going to be the orientation. However, Chesterfield Goshen needed tomorrow night for their budget meeting, so that went away. So, now the selection of the search committee is not till the 25th, which the only people who have to be there for that are Liz and the five school committee members.
So, do we know the dates?
I can do it if there's an alternate. And you don't want to do it, John?
Well, I...
It seems like it's coming down between the two of us.
I can't do, I'm away April vacation.
There's nothing scheduled for April vacation.
I'm away, I'm away for work the first three days in May, May 1st through the 3rd.
There's stuff planned for that.
I mean, potentially, what, if Zoom's an option, I'm only going to be in Louisiana, so I can, at night, I could...
If we, or I could be your alternate, if we tag-team it.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but I mean, you're the get it going committee. You think other committees will object if there's a primary and a secondary from us?
There's no rules against it.
There's no rule against it, and I think as long as you two communicate with each other, then...
We'd be able to share the information outside of the executive sessions.
I mean, the only thing that gets tricky is when people are, like, if you're not, if you're not involved with all of the interviews, it's hard to have an opinion on candidates if you weren't there for the interview.
Well, I think there's a primary person. The alternate is only to take in more information and provide information from that person, and maybe it won't even happen.
That's true.
So, who's going to be the primary?
So, I'll be the primary. It's just, if there's a work conflict, I can't, I can't commit to being in the, I'm assuming it's going to be in the library at West Hampton, at the high school. It's where the past two search meetings have been.
Probably, unless it's on Zoom.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
So, okay, so, I'm fine with that. I'll, if, nobody else wants it? Okay. I'll make a motion that I nominate myself, and that Margaret will be my alternate, should my business interests prohibit me from attending a meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. Okay.
Thanks, John.
No problem. Any, any other business that can't wait until our next meeting? I believe, Eliza, you have something?
Yeah, so, we have a field trip that we are going, hopefully going on, on June 11th for sixth grade, to go to High Meadow, and it's in Granby, Connecticut, so I'm looking for permission to travel outside the state.
Is there a motion to authorize the principal to relocate our children outside the jurisdiction of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on said date?
So moved.
There's a motion made by Margaret. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good. Yeah, you have more?
Article 16 in that bus contract talks about the provision is applied for up to 10 days during any one school year. I don't know if you, if you didn't want to wait till the next meeting. I found it.
You want to read, do you want to read, read the paragraph?
Well, it says, "If one school covered on a route combination does not hold classes while the other school of that route combination holds classes, the contractor agrees to provide transportation for the school in session at the usual proportionally daily rate for that half of the combination route. There shall be no transportation charge for the school that is not in session. This provision is applied for up to 10 days during any one school year."
Even better.
That means we got to pay.
No, wait, that's just a pay.
That means we pay.
We pay proportionate.
That's what I'm, I'm wondering if that's...
Because we're still only using 180 days of service. It's just, three days, we're using Hampshire isn't it, and at the end, so we pay half, half the cost, and the other half Hampshire Regional would pay when they use it for the three days at the end.
I wonder if we need to clarify with...
I want a clarification.
Company?
You're the lawyer.
And, you know, Mary Jane was just busy negotiating the bus contract for Worthington, so she might be someone who could call the bus company and ask a question. I like clarification.
Yeah, I don't want to decide this right now based on a quick read like that, because if it ends up costing us money, I don't...
Okay, let's stay on course for Wednesday, but...
Yeah.
So, so we want Mary Jane's opinion?
No, we want Mary Jane to talk to the bus company. I want someone to propose to bus company, we're looking at doing this thing. We're going to start, we would start three days prior to the high school, and we would end three days prior. We would start three days prior to everybody else, and we would end three days prior to everybody else.
Yep.
Or we're going to incur additional charges out of the contract.
So, Deanna, I'll draft an email that I'll send to you and Mary Jane, for one of you to send to our contact at the bus company.
Yeah, it would be really good to get that in writing, so that we, we are all clear.
And then here's the email.
So, then when the bill comes in, we can say, no, you said more.
No, but, so we all feel comfortable with what we're doing.
That's what I'm saying, because if you say, we do this, we do this thing, and then all of a sudden, the bus company sends us a bill for three days.
Right.
Difficult.
We're good. Wouldn't be us, because we started first. Our 180 got used and Hampshire kept going. The bill's going up there. Okay. Any other business that can't wait? Perfect. Discussion on the construction of new school. Update there, a full appraisal has been ordered for the property. We are waiting that to come back. The select board is mixed, but there is, there is at least one member that is heavily driving the bus to get a question on the May 7th ballot, on the town meeting, on one of the articles, to whether to move forward and acquire the entire parcel or not. How we develop it and what goes there to be determined at a future point in time. So, that's where that is. Security enhancements, work school safety grant?
So, the security enhancements in the van are on hold until I can meet with the new town administrator. We're playing phone tag at the moment.
He's only one weekend.
What's that?
He's only one weekend. Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll work on that. Are we, I mean, it's, it's March. Do you know, do you know offhand if the safety grant goes away on June 30th? If we haven't spent it?
I have no idea.
That might be a Mary Jane question.
Right.
On the grants.
I can, I'll shoot her an email, just so we can talk.
And when is Lauren going to want her van back?
ASAP.
Possession's 90s law.
There are two days in April that she's going to need the van, and after that, I don't know exactly when she needs it back, but there are two days in April, so we're trying to figure that out.
We trust you. We set the policy, you make it happen. Okay. Anything else? If there be nothing else to come before this body, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded at 7:29 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you all.
See you next week.